Metropolitan Planning Commission, June 14th meeting to an open. We’ll call a meeting to an order. And first is the adoption of the agenda. Commissioners, the agenda is in front of you. Any edits, changes? Motion to approve, second?
Second.
Any other discussions? Seeing none, all in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. The agenda is adopted. Now we are on to the approval of the May 24th, 2018 minutes. And those were mailed out to you prior to the meeting, Commissioners. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of May 24th? It’s been a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. And the May 24th minutes have been adopted. Now we are on to the recognition of the council members. And the only council member that I saw was Council Lady Johnson. Welcome.
Thank you Chair Atkins, esteemed Commissioners. Karen Johnson, Council Member for District 29. I’m here to speak on the deferral item for 2018 SP 040001. The reason why I’m speaking on the record today, as you all know, I did win at historic election as the new Register of Deeds for Nashville. So I’ll be coming out of the council seat very soon. However, I’ll be working with one of the at-large council members who will be appointed to oversee my district. And one of the things that I would like to request is that this particular proposal be held off. I know they have requested an indefinite deferral, but that’s sometimes a way to skirt around the council member not being there once it comes back up before the commission. And one of the things particular to this item is that the entire neighborhood surrounding this potential development, we had a community meeting. They are opposed to this at this particular time. Not that they’re opposed to development, but they’re opposed to the number of cottage-style homes that they’re wanting to put on this particular parcel. And so because of the number of homes, I will be working with this particular developer, Roy Dale and his group. I’m going to make sure that we’re in constant communications throughout my transition. But I wanted to bring it to your attention as a commission, because I don’t want you to be blindsided should it come back on the agenda. And you see me here as registrar, as one of the folks in the community with everybody else coming before you with this with our at-large representative. So just wanted to be stated on the record that there are some concerns about the indefinite deferral. I know that that is protocol, and you all will move forward with that. But I wanted my constituents to know that I did stand here today to make their concerns known, and that you all will factor that in in future decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lady. And I want to personally say thank you very much for your service as a Council Lady, and congratulations on your new elected post. So congrats. Seeing no other council members, I’m going to take a moment of personal privilege, I hope without objection. I first want to announce that we have a new, which I’m excited to announce, that we have a new Executive Director, and that is Lucy Kemp. Congratulations. Let’s give her a round of applause. And just to be, I want to make sure that everybody knows what happened here as we went through this process. And before I do that, I want to say a sincere thank you to our Inom Director, Bob Lehman, sitting beside me, who has ran the department for, while our other Executive Director has left, he’s been with the department for over 20 years. The one thing I can say about Bob is I can’t say anything negative about him. Bob is a super-good guy. He runs a mean operation. He has been an integral part of this planning commission for a long time. He’s been the backbone of this organization and the operation for a long time. And I just want to say thank you. And Bob, I really appreciate your service to Nashville. And hopefully Bob will continue to stay with us at the commission, because with both Bob and Lucy, I feel like we have really a dynamic duo. And we are lucky to have both of these people on our staff. So I want to give them both just a round of applause.
Thank you.
And, yeah, please, Bob.
Thank you. And I congratulate Lucy for getting the position. And we worked together great. And I think it will be a smooth transition. And I don’t see that we’ll miss a beat going forwards. So I’m really excited to work with Lucy.
We are really lucky to have you guys. The one thing, just a little bit about the process, so you all know and the public knows how we got to this point, but it’s been over about a six-month process. We started this as we announced it at the Planning Commission in December. It was officially announced by HR on January 16th. We got about 60 applications from around the country. It was advertised on social media, Twitter, LinkedIn, Facebook. Additionally, the position was also posted with the American Planning Association. It was sent to the Urban Land Institute of Nashville and many sister cities. The applicant pool, we were great, they were a great applicant pool. HR made initial review of those particular documents, based on the strongest qualifications. And 30 candidates were then sent to what we would call our Subject Expert Panel, which included the former Executive Director, Rick Bernhardt, our own Jeff Haynes. I want to thank him for his service to that committee. And it was, in my terms, it was a balanced committee that took input from both industry and the community. It was a diverse panel, and they looked at those applicants and got it down to six applicants. Then the interview panel, which was an interview subcommittee. See, this is a long process just explaining it. That particular panel was made up of a diverse group of individuals, from Metro, from the industry, from community activists. Former planning commissioner was, several planning commissioners were on there, including Council Lady Berkeley Allen. We then got it down to five candidates. Those five candidates were interviewed. Three were submitted to the commission. The commission interviewed those candidates in an open public meeting, which was advertised. And then we had another open public meeting today. We spent a lot of time with the committee and with HR. I also want to thank the Director of HR, Shannon Hall, and Jane Madden-Bryan for all the work they did. They put in countless hours helping us find a new director. We are, I’m very pleased that we had somebody in our own backyard that we could hire. So without that process explained, I feel very good about our leadership, and about our staff, and about the planning commission. And so I know the other Commissioners were happy with the process. And Commissioners, do you want to say anything? Or, just want to make sure. All right. Well, we appreciate it. It was a long process, over six months. And we came out, what I’m really most proud of is that we said that we would try to have somebody by June, and May or June. And so we shot for that. And as you know, you’ve got to go through a lot of different loops, a lot of different steps to make that happen. So I appreciate the Commissioners and all their time and effort in this process. So, without further ado, Item E, Items for Deferral Withdrawal.
The items for deferral or withdrawal are as follows. Item number two, 2015 SP 049003, on page five of your agenda. The 1225 Stanback Avenue Amendment, staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number three, 2018 SP 017001, the Glendale and Scenic SP, staff recommendation is to defer to the July 26th Planning Commission meeting. And I will note that the July 26th meeting will be in this location, as opposed to our regular meeting location. Item number four, 2018 SP 024001, 1227 Pierce Road SP, staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number five, 2018 SP 033001, 2423 Buena Vista Pike SP, staff recommendation is to defer to the June 28th Planning Commission meeting. Item number six, 2018 SP 035001, Elm Hill Place SP, staff recommendation is to defer to the June 28th Planning Commission meeting. Item number seven, 2018 SP 04001, on page six of your agenda, the 3156 Anderson Road SP, staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number nine, 2018 Z 038 PR 001, staff recommendation is to defer to June 28th Planning Commission meeting. And item number 10, also on page six of your agenda, 2018 S 039 PR 001, request to rezone from RS 5 to R 6A, staff recommendation is to defer to the June 28th Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. And the items that you’ve heard are, and make sure I get these correct, for deferral withdrawal are Items number two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine, and 10. Is that correct?
Correct.
Commissioners, you’ve heard the items for deferral. Is there a motion?
Remove.
There’s a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and those items are deferred. We are on to Item F, the Consent Agenda.
As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission’s decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner, and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. As a notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items, unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda. Items on consent. Item number eight, 2017 Z 078 PR 001, on page six of your agenda. A request to rezone from RS 5 to R 6A for property located on Georgia Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 12, 2018 SP 012002, on page seven of your agenda. The South Point Marketplace SP Amendment. It’s a request to amend a specific plan on property located on Pettis Road. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 13, 2018 S 094001, the Mary H Rogers subdivision. A request for final plat to create two lots on property located on Westport Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 15, 2018 Z 056 PR 001, a request to rezone from OL to MUL, and from OL to RM 20A for property located on 27th Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 16, 15379P 001, the Galleries at Bellevue Pud revision. It’s a request to revise the preliminary plan and for final site plan for a portion of a planned unit development located on Highway 70 South. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Under Other Business, on page eight of your agenda, item 20 is to accept the Director’s report and approve administrative items.
Thank you. So on the consent agenda, Commissioners, you make sure I’m correct. We’ve got Item number eight, Item number 12, 13, 15, 16, and 20. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Commissioners, you’ve heard the items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt? There’s been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. So, that means that we are for the viewing public, and that means we are considering Items, make sure I’m correct here, Items number one, number 11, and number 14 for public hearing. Is that correct? Excellent. Item one.
I recuse.
Commissioner Sims will recuse herself on item one.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Marty Sewell with the Community Design Division. And I want to make sure everyone can hear me. My voice is a little bit low today. In January, the commission directed staff to facilitate a community planning process and develop a small area plan for the Highland Heights neighborhood. This followed a five-year period in which the commission heard more than 40 rezoning cases for the area. Our first task was to establish the study area boundary, as shown here, an area that is bounded by Dickerson Pike, East Trinity Lane, Ellington Parkway, and Douglas Avenue, all of which are in the East Nashville community planning area. Shown here is the Nashville Next Growth and Preservation Concept Map, showing how Highland Heights relates to downtown, East Nashville, and North Nashville. Here’s another view of the relationship to downtown. This distance from Woodland Street Bridge to the corner of Dickerson and Douglas is approximately 1.75 miles. Staff built a five-month planning process that focused our engagement efforts into a four-day charrette process that was held at the Metro Police Department’s East Precinct. An advisory committee was selected to help steer the process. Staff facilitated four advisory committee meetings, including, as shown here, a neighborhood tour during day one of charrette week. A visioning workshop kicked off charrette week that was attended by more than 75 participants. At that meeting, staff facilitated 10 small groups to identify community resources, identify areas for growth, change, and preservation, and to assign building types to areas identified for growth. This information was used to inform the recommendations that would follow. Summarized input gathered from stakeholders during small group exercises at the visioning workshop is shown here. This would guide the remainder of the process to develop the plan. At this stage in the process, a clear preference was established, focusing growth along the corridors, and while preserving the core for maintaining single-family residential development patterns, and by core meaning the core of the neighborhood. Staff presented the previous map shown, along with all charrette week recommendations, to a crowd of more than 50 at the Work in Progress Public Meeting that closed out charrette week. An open house followed a brief orientation presentation. And during the open house, staff discussed each recommendation, and was available to address questions, as well as to document concerns from participants. Following charrette week, we started building the plan. Based on the input we received from stakeholders, we developed a list of study goals shown here. These were later presented to and confirmed by the advisory committee. I’ll refer back to these throughout, as these were also helpful in guiding us through the recommendations we made. Now to the recommendations of the plan that are made up of the components that you see here on the screen. Starting with the community character recommendations, shown is the existing community character policy map for Highland Heights. In other words, this is what we started with. 10 policies are represented on this map. Throughout the process, staff has identified seven map amendments based on input from the community, as well as extensive analysis of existing conditions and recent development First, shown are areas where staff recommends changing from neighborhood-evolving policy to neighborhood-maintenance policy, all of which is consistent with the goal to protect single-family residential character of the core. Second, are areas recommended to change from neighborhood-maintenance policy to neighborhood-evolving policy, creating additional space for transitions from areas recommended for growth. Third, are areas recommended to change from mixed-use neighborhood policy to neighborhood-evolving policy. Note that this includes Cherokee Avenue, where multiple rezonings to multifamily zoning districts were approved over the last few years. This supports the housing choice and diversity goal. Fourth, staff recommends changing from mixed-use neighborhood policy to neighborhood-center policy at these two locations, shown at the number four. And fifth, staff recommends extending mixed-use corridor policy south to Douglas Avenue, which is consistent with the transit-supportive mixed-use corridor goal. Sixth, a change to civic policy for property owned by Metro Water Services. And seventh, a change from open-space policy to civic policy for a portion of the block that’s home to the Tom Joy Head Start. The policy for the Head Start would change to civic, while Tom Joy Park would remain an open-space policy. Next are the supplemental policy recommendations. The supplemental policies, just as background, remember these expand upon standard guidance of the Community Character Manual. They provide an additional layer of policy detail, and are tailored to address unique needs in individual areas. The supplemental policies are applied when community character policies do not provide detail necessary to meet the community’s needs. When present, the guidance of supplemental policy should be followed when it conflicts with underlying policy. And I’ll repeat that one even though it’s in red, that just to remember as we look through these, and for the community too, that the supplemental policy is what would guide the areas’ growth, rather than just the underlying policy. Supplemental policy recommendations consist of three parts, shown here. The Building Regulating Plan, Mobility Plan, and two standalone supplemental policy areas. Building Regulating Plan consists of the components shown here, and I’ll go through each of them. First, the sub-district map identifies 10 sub-districts, each that are unique, each implementing at least one study goal. The sub-districts map, paired with the appropriate building types by sub-district table, is shown here. Note that the building types referred to here are defined in the Community Character Manual, which is also part of Nashville Next. Shown here are the design principles and standards for the single-family house or house-one-unit building type included in the plan. A similar type of building, excuse me, similar design principles are created for each building type that we’ve included in the plan. Note that while these design principles and standards identify bulk standards, properties that are zoned for their intended use will follow requirements of the zoning ordinance until such time that the principles and standards contained in the Highland Heights study are incorporated into a specific plan or an urban design overlay. Now back to the Building Regulating Plan map, regarding these planning sub-districts, sub-districts R1 and R2, these are single-family and dadu-only uses. They implement the goal to protect the single-family residential character of the core. M1, that you’ll see along the neighborhood-center areas, this implements the goal of neighborhood-center. M2 represents the corridor along Dickerson Pike, as well as a portion of East Trinity. That implements the transit-supportive mixed-use corridor goal. R4 and R5 provide a transition from the corridor to the neighborhood core, and allow, along with R6, implement the goals, provide a variety of housing choice and diversity, compatible infill, adequate infrastructure, connected and walkable, while also implementing the goal to protect the single-family residential character of the core. Lastly, M3 implements the goal of prepared for redevelopment of the Holt Camp Greenhouses. The second part of the supplemental policy is the Mobility Plan, and includes the components that are shown here. The Mobility Plan map identifies street hierarchy by street type, new streets and extensions, and an alley system, all of which will be incorporated into the Major and Collector Street Plan with adoption of the Highland Heights study. Note that Primary Boulevard, and future BRT, and Secondary Boulevard, street types, implement the goal for transit-supportive mixed-use corridors, while all street connections and alley systems shown implement the goals, connected and walkable, and adequate infrastructure. Shown is the cross-section for Douglas Avenue, or Primary Avenue, is defined by the Mobility Plan. This cross-section, similar to this, has been created for each of the street hierarchy types that are presented in the Mobility Plan. The final component of the supplemental policy are two standalone policy areas, that they, each one will include the components shown on the screen. They are located at Chickasaw Avenue, excuse me, Cherokee Avenue, and of course, the greenhouse property. Let’s go back. Staff recommends a standalone supplemental policy for properties along Cherokee Avenue, as shown here in this map. The intent is to establish a public infrastructure framework to accommodate higher-intensity residential uses, which includes the need for a new north-south connectivity and an alley system. This accomplishes the adequate infrastructure, variety of housing choice and diversity, and connected and walkable goals of the plan. It’s important to note that it caps zoning intensity at RM 9A, until such time that a new street connection is approved via private development. Absent this level of policy detail, staff has previously recommended RM 20A zoning for this street. This supplemental policy provides staff the added level of guidance to lower the expectation for future development that can occur without a new street connection. Staff also recommends a standalone supplemental policy for the 40-acre greenhouse property that is central to the study area. This property operated as a greenhouse and garden long before urban development surrounded it. Its management is currently in its fifth generation. As land costs rise, ownership has recognized that over the long term, a move may be warranted. And this supplemental policy would allow for redevelopment of the site, primarily with housing, though with a mix not typically allowed in neighborhood maintenance. It incorporates adaptive reuse of historic structures, allowing for commercial uses in structures that would form the development center of the site. This implements the goals of prepared for redevelopment at the Holt Camp Greenhouses, compatible infill, and adaptive reuse of historic structures. Shown here is the development scenario that staff prepared for the site, which incorporates the supplemental policy guidance. Note, this is one interpretation of how the site could redevelop under the supplemental policy. Future design should incorporate the themes that are represented in this scenario, but they aren’t tied to it like they might be with the site plan that’s included in an SP. Next are, and finally, the action plan, part of the document, is the final component. It incorporates three parts that are shown here. There are the actions that would be adopted with the study today, recommendations to amend other documents, and that would happen in the future, and then also a list of implementation opportunities. And speaking of the implementation opportunities, we’ve identified these, shown here, for future consideration, that address specific needs identified by the study. Note that, again, staff intends to follow-up study adoption, if the commission agrees, with the study of identifying, excuse me, with identifying zoning solutions in coordination with the district council member and the stakeholders in the neighborhood. Finally, we recognize that the commission has a difficult decision to make on this case. It’s always our preference that the exercises we use to facilitate our planning process will pave the way to consensus. That didn’t happen exactly in this case, due to the conflicting visions expressed by stakeholders from start to finish. Through the exercises and follow-up communication, we listened to all sides in advancing the goals of Nashville Next and the goals of Highland Heights. Having said that, at this point, we feel we’ve done what we can to address concerns and balance the interests of all the parties involved. As a reminder, adoption of the Highland Heights study includes adopting the study as a supplement to the East Nashville Community Plan, adopt policy recommendations, including the supplemental policies that I’ve explained, as well as adopting the Major and Collector Street Plan, changes that would align it with the Mobility Plan. Closing, staff recommends approval. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Very thorough report. We’ll open this item for public hearing, and since we’re the applicant, we’ll just go right into testimony. And I want to remind everybody that everybody gets two minutes to testify. And we’re going to start with, and you need to state your name and address before you speak. And we welcome everyone coming down. And I know you’ve spent a lot of time working on this, and we appreciate it very much. And so anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support, if y’all will line up behind the microphone, and we’ll get started. We really appreciate you coming down. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Gordon Stacey Harmon. I reside at 1826 Joy Circle. I come before you today as a 10-year resident of Highland Heights, and as a member of this study’s advisory committee. I stand in support of this proposed amendment to our land use policies recommended by the study. It would be remiss of me to declare full support, as I have asked for consideration of a few conditions, but overall, the study and amendment strikes a balance between maintaining significant portions of our neighborhood’s character, while allowing for development that is more sustainable and sensitive to this area. I do not oppose development in our neighborhood, but I do advocate a much less aggressive pace and more responsible development that accounts for its impact to Highland Heights. Metropolitan Nashville, Davidson County is 526 square miles in size. Our neighborhood is roughly one square mile in size, and that’s less than 0.2% of the total landmass for our city. Yet we have seen 188 new units built in our one-square-mile in the last five years. Over the past two years, four SP rezonings that have been approved will add roughly 380 more units. These future developments will increase resident- These future developments will increase residential units by 25% within this one square mile footprint, while our infrastructure will be tasked to accommodate those additional residents with no significant improvements. To answer the argument that changes now are unfair to future rezoning applications, I remind you, any adopted land use policy is not an entitlement. It is the guide by which rezoning decisions are judged. To counter the argument that Asheville needs as much housing as possible, how much should our neighborhood sacrifice for future residents to the detriment of current residents? In closing, it is appropriate for this amendment to maintain long-established sections of our neighborhood while allowing growth along these major corridors. This amendment recognizes the single-family character and will help preserve those areas with minimal impact from development in more fitting areas. Thank you for consideration. I encourage you to vote yes for this amendment.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hi, Courtney Williams, 1303 Lishy Avenue. I take tremendous heart in knowing that the stated goal for this process was to ensure that policies reflected how the community wanted growth and preservation to happen. Over the last three years, this small square mile has done its part to shoulder the growth we are seeing across Nashville's entire urban core. The residents of this neighborhood have compromised and supported growth, and we have already added density disproportionate to the rest of District Five. Part of the plan's vision states, "We will reclaim and protect the character of our neighborhood fabric through sensitive design." With this in mind, I hope you will consider the following amendments. One, please lower the sub-districts in the northwest corner of our neighborhood. It is important to preserve the single-family footprint that exists here. And two, regarding neighborhood centers, please preserve the historic churches in these areas. The Douglas Lishy subd- the Douglas Lishy sub-district in which I live is mainly residential single-family homes. M1 sacrifices this existing pattern and encourages development on three sides of my home. If you're telling me I have to sacrifice my privacy and quality of residential life, then please consider development similar in scale to what was done in Riverside Village. This commercial area complements the homes surrounding it, doesn't disregard them. My investment here is long-term. Single-family properties like my own accommodate more diverse families, and they encourage and support long-term investment in the neighborhood with room for families to grow. I believe if we only focus on increasing density, we negatively affect the affordability, livability, and availability of single-family homes, our community's foundation. Preserving a community's foundation is what allows the most desirable neighborhoods to stand the test of time, to remain desirable enough to keep thriving and even have the chance to evolve. Please don't take this away from us. Thank you so much. Please approve this.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Devon Baldwin. I live at 1334 Lishy. I too am recommending approval of this, but also with some amendments, so I don't know if I'll be as eloquent as Stacy and Courtney, but I think generally what we're looking for is the proposed plan but with a little bit less intense density on some of the core streets within the neighborhood. So, I too am for development. I'm really excited about some of the things that are happening in our neighborhood, but I am concerned about several things. So, we have a lot of water and sewage issues. We have some traffic and safety concerns. I've also seen a diminishing tree canopy primarily around my home. My husband and I bought our home about four years ago, and in that time, just in the last four years, we've seen a lot of change. Some of it good, some of it not so good. So, really, overall, what I'm asking for is that you just consider some of these things when you think about approving this. So, primarily the northwest corridor, the sub-district up there, Edith, Edwin, Lishy, and Meridian, we'd like you to lower that to a lower sub-district. I really want to preserve the character of our neighborhood. I personally live in a historic home, and I want to see some of our single-family homes remain. We have a lot of historic buildings, and as I mentioned before, the tree canopy. So, I thank you for your time, and I am recommending this for approval.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Sam McCullough. I live in Cleveland Park and Highland Heights, lifelong resident of East Nashville. I'm asking for approval for this land change, but we do need to keep in mind, we have to have the density in order to have the affordability. Nashville is outpricing itself, and we've got to keep some of those large tracts of land available for development for affordable housing. In order to get affordable housing, you have to have some density. Right now, I work at Mahari Medical College, and we are in a food desert. You've got three neighborhood associations, Cleveland Park, McFerrin Park, and Highland Heights, without a walkable grocery store in either of those neighborhoods. So, the word is that if you bring the people, the development of the grocery stores will come. At one time, we had almost four grocery stores that were in a walkable distance. We need to be able to take some of those tracts of land and use the multi-use ability on those corners and in those long corridors along Dickerson, along Douglas. One of the mainstay grocery stores was at 1300 Lishy Avenue. It since has been torn down. So, I'm asking us to look out for our historical buildings, churches, and the historically significant homes throughout the area, but we need to make sure that we keep in place the ability to put affordable housing, if it means sacrificing some density for it. We need to be able to do that, and I hope that this land change and this policy will work for many years going forward. Thank you for your time, and I'm asking for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Bobby Matthews, Jr., and I am a resident of 5169 Hilson Road. I am here in support of the direction the Planning Commission has taken to lead Highland Heights in a positive growth direction. This direction will help to create additional housing opportunities for Nashville citizens as a whole, and also help to improve a blighted block in our community. As community development mortgage lender who works with many clients across all income levels, I'm a witness to the lack of affordable housing opportunities. This plan allows for growth opportunities across low-to-moderate income levels. Therefore, I support the direction of this project. Thank you for your consideration, and I hope for an approval.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chairman Atkins and members of the Planning Commission and members of the Planning Department. My name is Martha Carroll. I'm retired clergy. I live at 325 Gatewood Avenue. We've been there since 2012 when we moved down after retiring to take care of grandchildren. My thanks to the Planning Department for listening and working with us and for seriously considering our concerns. The plan isn't perfect, but then none of us are either, and I can live with the changes that are suggested here. I do have some concerns about the density in the corridors, and yet I understand the relationship between affordability and density, and so I'm glad that's a problem for you all to figure out and not me. I've met many neighbors during this process. One of them gave me permission to share her story. Her name is Geraldine Pointer. She lives at 1324 Stainback Avenue, and that dead ends into my street, Gatewood. She's 81 years old. She's lived in the same house since 1971. She has two handicapped children. Both her son and daughter had strokes. One is 64 and one is 61. She provides their care. She also works part-time, three days a week, and so she has caregivers come in when she's away at work, and they are also in daycare during Monday through Fridays. She's in conversation with the fire department because of her living situation with her children, and she told me that firemen have told her it is difficult to get through on Stainback. We had heard that, but had never talked to anybody directly affected by that. She says that people, and I can attest to that, park on both sides of the street, and it's very narrow, as is the case in so many of those streets where we live. Sometimes mail's not delivered because a car is parked in front of a post, a mailbox. So, density in this area with infrastructure not able to handle it makes navigating these streets difficult and sometimes dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Sandra Stratton. I live at 325 Gatewood Avenue. I came down with Martha to take care of our grandchildren, and we've been here for about five years. The street that we live on, Gatewood Avenue, used to be a driveway. It was the entrance into the greenhouse, so the mansion for the greenhouse. It's narrow. It's more like a country lane. There are no sidewalks, and I'm concerned about density there. I'm not concerned about density everywhere. I understand that there are places where increased density is appropriate and necessary to support more affordable housing, but I wish that the Commission would look more closely at this particular area and in general at the northwest corridor of the planned area to lower those sub-districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Frank Hundley. I'm a life, born in Nashville and currently live at 921A Delmas Avenue. I support this proposal. I'd also really like to commend the good faith efforts of the Planning Commission and of the Highland Heights neighbors to come to a consensus around a vision for an area of the city that is going through a transition even faster than the rate of the city as a whole. I'd particularly like to acknowledge the role that Ashanti Davis has played in the process. She is a lifelong resident of this neighborhood, is a very balanced and consensus-minded person, and has the best interests of this community at heart and has worked really hard on this. I am excited by some of the growth, but would encourage an aggressive movement towards adding density to Dickerson Road, which affords a lot of space to add density and holds the potential to create the affordable housing we need. However, I would support amendments to the proposal to address, I think, the shared desire for less intense development in the neighborhood core, including Lishy, Meridian, Edith, and Edwin. The policy amendment should allow for greater density only in certain areas, and the proposed amendment permits too much intense density in the infill of the neighborhood. I'd also like to see more robust community benefits agreements, to see an investment in infrastructure, stormwater, traffic calming, sidewalks, sewage, and electric that is commensurate with the density that's coming in to the neighborhood. But with that said, I do support this proposal, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Devon McPherson. I live at 1431 Lishy Avenue, in the last surviving residence of the Joy family, a home I've been actively preserving and restoring for the last seven years. I would also like to thank the Planning Commission. I know when this process started, a lot of the residents didn't feel like anybody was listening, and we felt like this was a long uphill battle, and it was very refreshing, surprising, and appreciated to see the plan that was laid out before us because evidently we were heard, and I think that there was quite a bit of respect shown to residents and appreciation for the historic character of the neighborhood, some homes of which have now turned 200 years old or older. I would also like to echo some of the sentiment that our tree canopy in Highland Heights is some of the oldest in all of Nashville, with several trees on. The Joy property being well over 100 years old, and we've watched some of that disappear in lieu of forcing two homes onto one lot. So, if there was something that we could do to work forward in the future to help preserve some of that, this resident would definitely appreciate it. I would also like to add that some of the people who may oppose this plan in a few minutes have mentioned turning Lishy into a major transit corridor just because it has one bus line, who would throw condos on it and maul it up as best they can. The people who live in this neighborhood have already watched their property values double or triple. They're not selling out. They're here for the long haul. They've already spoken, and some more of them are about to speak to you, and we encourage that you listen to them a little bit more, the people who are here and have built this neighborhood and will continue to shape it, because they really do care about this place, and it's important to all of us. So, we really do appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hello, Commissioner and Commissioners, and Planning Commission members, committee members, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. I am Pastor Linda Rex. I pastor Good News Fellowship of 1401 Lishy Avenue. I have, we serve a free meal every Sunday to people who live in the community, and I've met quite a few who live in the Highland Heights neighborhood, and I've been grateful to participate with the Highland Heights Neighborhood Association and get to know our neighbors on a personal level who are working for the betterment of the neighborhood. And my greatest concern has been watching people lose their homes and then having a place to go, because the people who own their homes have decided to rebuild or do something new. I am all for growth, and I think it's just a part of our development as human beings. We try to build what is greatest and best and grow and enjoy the life we have, but I would pray that we don't forget those who cannot help themselves and those who have no one to defend them and no one to look out for their best interests. And I would also ask that we consider the, as others have said before me, the safety and the infrastructure as far as being able to drive down a street and being able to walk a street and be able to grow our families together. So, that was just, I am very grateful for all the work that has been put into this plan. I really feel that you, I am grateful you took the time to really listen to everybody, and I saw that in action as I came to the different meetings, and I just want to say thank you and say that I do approve this plan.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Alex Tyson. I live at 1225 Stainback. My husband and I moved there last year, last fall. I also support and hope that you approve this plan, of course, with a few conditions that our residents have already spoken about. I don't want to reiterate everything that they've already said, but basically in terms of limiting density in certain areas. I came from the Nations. We lived there for two years. I got to see exactly what happened over those two years as far as over gentrification, overcrowding, the problems it caused with parking, emergency vehicles not being able to get down streets, and I'm starting to see that problem already occur in our own neighborhood. We can't park in front of our house most nights. Just up Stainback from us, we can see where barely one car can get through because people are parked on both sides, and it's just not wide enough. I'm not going to go into further detail because I feel like Stacy covered a good portion of it, and I know Ashanti definitely will cover more, so I just want to say thank you, and I hope you approve this plan.
Thank you. Welcome.
So, my name is Austin Jackson. I currently live at 5729 Cedar Ash Crossing, and just to start off, I'm currently a student at Fisk University, graduating soon and would like there to be some, you know, more affordable options for our students. The location is great and actually less than 10 minutes away from my school. I know many students whose parents would be more than willing to purchase these homes for their children, and I believe this community would actually be a great option considering the area and the safety of the area and all that. As a student who's been in Nashville for a while, I've seen the decreasing affordability options for the properties and affordability in the area for our students. A project like this would be more than helpful to convince the student population to stay within, to stay within the city after they graduate, as well as, you know, help the future, help the future developing talent within the area, and it's going to be increasingly greater for our city of Nashville. So, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Chadel Rice. I'm at 2165 Baker Road. I have had the opportunity to attend several meetings in the Highland Heights area and to take part of the process to help rebuild the recommended plan. I'm excited to see Highland Heights blossom into a well-designed community where people from all walks of life can enjoy. I support the Planning Commission's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Jessica Williams. Good evening. I was a part of the advisory committee, and it was a great opportunity to be able to serve and meet with all different neighbors from all walks of life to see what were important to them. I fully support the recommendation from the Planning Department. I know it was a tough job to be able to balance out the needs and the wants of all different neighbors. I feel like it's a great starting place to see Highland Heights be able to evolve in an equitable community where people have sidewalks, people, you know, can really fully enjoy the neighborhood, so I fully support the plan.
Thank you, and thank you for being on the committee. Welcome.
Hi, how are you? My name is Omi Jumene, 1204 North Second Street, Nashville, Tennessee, 37207. I am, you know, I live in the adjacent neighborhood. I'm in Cleveland Park, but I did want to come and speak in support of this plan. I just want to applaud you for getting everybody to the table. I do wish that maybe this had happened prior to the plan being changed in the first place, but, you know, better late than never. One of the highlights of this meeting for me, besides hearing all the thoughts that I've heard so far, and I'm sure I'll hear more, is seeing people that I know have completely opposing views standing in line together to speak in support of this. So, you got something right there, and I applaud you for that. And one thing that I would say, I heard somebody mention, you know, improvements to infrastructure. I don't know if any of that is in this, in this plan, but, you know, I've kind of been, that's been on my mind a lot too, especially since we're kind of, again, right nearby there. The sewer lines in our neighborhood, you know, I was home when the guys came with the cameras and went down in the lines, and I think they're as old as the neighborhood is in a lot of these places. We actually had a live rat crawl up out of our toilet, so, you know, I can tell you that, yeah, it happened. There's YouTube. There's YouTube videos of it if you look it up. It's actually more common than you'd think. But anyway, you know, I think that you really, it is good to think about, you know, when you're adding all this density to these places and not adding any improvements or upgrading the infrastructure, it can create unintended problems and consequences. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for the story. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Myron Dowell. I'm a resident of Highland Heights. I also sit on the advisory committee. I'm also a developer. I live at 109 Douglas. I thought that the advisory process, the charrette process, the entire process was balanced. There were diverging interests. I am concerned about infrastructure as well. I think we do need some density. I think that the policy documents struck a fair balance with the various interests that were at the table. One of the things that I looked at in viewing this community when I was looking at census tract data, about 40% of the housing stock in the census tract is owner occupied, 47% rental units, and the other 13 are abandoned or vacant properties. And for someone that understands urban economics and development, that screams development. And so there is an affordability problem, yes, not just in this neighborhood but throughout Nashville. And one of the ways to accommodate that is to have density in the various areas that would support it and to strike that balance. But if we don't have the necessary density, we're not going to have any affordability in Highland Heights or in the other urban core neighborhoods. I do support this project. I support the effort by the planning staff. I thought they did a great job, first rate all the way, and I'm glad that we've reached an endpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for serving on the committee. Next, come on up.
Hi there, good afternoon. My name is Todd Sisson and I own the property at 1820 Joy Circle. This is located on the east side of the Marshall and Lishy development and just to the north of the proposed greenhouse development. I wanted to speak on behalf of myself and my neighbors. My understanding is, part of the plan, although I do approve, the section that I'd like you to consider is the proposed reinstatement of Marshall Street between Jones and Lishy. Three quarters of my property will be bordered by the new developments if both of those go through. And my understanding is, due to zoning, if that is made into a street, we'll essentially have two front yards with the ability to only build a four-foot high fence there. So there are concerns with privacy and safety. And again, although I do approve, I'd hope that you consider making this potentially an alley or a smaller thoroughfare.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Next, welcome.
My name is William Smallman. I live at 1512 Paris Avenue and I own properties on Meridian and Montgomery in the Highland Heights area. So speaking first off, thank you guys, Marty and Lee. Amazing job on this entire process. It was, I would say, pretty challenging because there are a lot of competing interests speaking and it was handled very professionally. And it was a long conversation, which was a good experience overall. I believe some of the items that are kind of dial backs or can be counterbalanced with people that want a little more. And I believe that that's what this policy's created, is the proper balance. And I think we could go into detail on adding here and there, but I think it should remain fairly consistent with what's been presented today without any changes. The one thing I would like to see is that as after this is passed, an actual implementation of it. Instead of it being done on piecemeal where the neighborhood develops into a hodgepodge where one gets R-20A and the next guy builds a single-family on a dense policy, I would rather see something actually implemented to create some consistency so the end result is actually what we're aiming for instead of kind of a salt-tooth pattern of density and lack of right next to each other. Other than that, I commend you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Come down. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Seth Jennings. I'm an owner at 1308 Montgomery Avenue. I generally support the plan with some exceptions. Just want to point out, the policy proposed for these lots, the plan walks it back to maintenance and single-family. That provides a big drop in density from Douglas. That's going to hurt a lot of my neighbors that I've, I've been owning Montgomery. I think their, their future, their property values. I think should be a better transition and I wish the lots in Montgomery should have a higher intensity policy.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming in.
How are you doing?
Welcome.
My name is William Scales. I'm a resident of 1806 Lishy and I'm for this plan. I believe that putting this plan together will have more homes, where people have more places to live. And I don't, I don't, I don't even see a traffic issue with this. So I'm for that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Welcome.
Okay, well, you all, we're not going to let you guys deal with the technology. My name is Ashanti Davis. I live at 321 Edwin Street. I have lived there my entire life with the exception of going to college and law school. I bought a house there up from my parents. They live at 315. That's where I grew up. That was my permanent address. I bought a house, two houses up from them. Now there's four houses between us, but that's okay because the lots were pretty large that were in between us and the person tore it down and put two. My grandmother used to say that time ain't as long as it always has been. And I would always be like, what does that mean? Like, time ain't as long as it has been. And it means that sometimes things happen decades ago and we make mistakes and then we think we've learned from those mistakes and it would never happen again. And I wish that that was true. I support this plan with a few modifications because I will tell you that these people, the people on the planning staff, worked really hard. And I didn't realize that there was that much difference in our neighborhood about what it should look like in the future. And the planning staff listened to everybody and did their very best to come up with a compromise. But sometimes compromise isn't easy because this is a really small square. As my neighbor Stacy told you, we represent 0.2% of all of Davidson County. We're only one square mile. We're not even in the UZO. We weren't a part of Nashville until 1960 and at that time, my great-grandfather owned a bunch of land on Trinity Lane and Edwin Street. This is Edwin Street. I've sort of have these pictures to kind of give you an idea. We talk about this map and you see that map and, yeah, and you see this map and you see these pictures and I want you to, on this map that you've seen, this is where high density, they want to put it, where these homes are. This is where they want to put high density, even though there's single-family footprint. Devin spoke earlier about Lishy Avenue and the homes that are over 200 years old, homes that have predated, I mean, generations. That's a Highland Heights vision statement. I think a theme throughout all of this, you all, time ain't as long as it has been, there's a theme of loss in most of those comments. And I think most of my neighbors and I are just asking that can we stop some of the loss? Some of it you can't. Some of it's just going to happen and we deal with it, we grieve it, and we move on. But this isn't just land use policy. This is where lives happen. This is where my dad grew up at 315 Edwin Street and then decided to come back and raise his kids. This is where I hope one day that I can raise my family. This is where my great-grandfather raised my grandmother. And so this is more than just land use policy and housing types. This is a place where life happens. And we have lost neighbors, we've lost a quality of life, we've lost peace of mind. We have lost a lot over the last several years. And that's some of that because, as my neighbor Stacy also pointed out, the four developments that he highlighted for you, that increases 25%. He didn't include all the upzoning petitions on Cherokee that have gone through. He didn't include the units that you all disapprove and planning recommends disapproval and then our elected councilman goes to council and gets it pushed through anyway even though the density is inappropriate for the area. We're talking, it's more than 25%. That 25% just represents four SPs over the last year. Infrastructure woes, that's some of it. How do we justify greater density? Even though we're willing to add density where it's appropriate, how do we justify when we have drainage ditches and narrow streets? This is from Edwin Street. This is right in front of me where I live. Right now, we're proposing on this very narrow road to put stacked flats and housing courts. How do we expect that to fit on this road? How do we expect it to fit when that's our drainage system? My house floods, my laundry room floods at least three times a year because of all the rain and because of the water and I can't do enough to keep it away from the house. That's also in front of my house. You heard my neighbor talk about the sewage line and how a rat came out. I have not seen a rat, but I did have sewage back up into my house in January because I wasn't reconnected to the line when Metro Water came to resleeve, which they do periodically because it's an old sewage line. And I had to pay a lot of money to figure out what the problem was, but thankfully Metro Water did fix the problem and they also replaced the sewer lines. I mean, they replaced my sewer line on my property, so I am very thankful for that. This is the map in December 2016. It's mostly neighborhood maintenance. This is the map that you're looking at today, January 2017. That's when that policy change went into effect without public notice and significant community engagement. Here it is today. All we ask is that, look at where the high density is and ask yourself whether or not that's appropriate. All we ask is that we maintain what little that we have left and that you don't sign a death warrant on this community and that you allow it to continue to live in its current form. Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually also, just so you guys have copies of the presentation so that you can look at the maps and...
Will you grab those and bring them to Lucy? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. Same drill, two minutes, and please state your name and your address. So let's, hold on one second, let's get the...
I've got a slide too. Can they? Okay.
Hold on, we're not, we'll get, we'll get it up. We won't start your time yet.
No, I had a different slide that I, that's not mine. But I'll go ahead and start while she's pulling it up.
Okay, go ahead.
The reason I can't support the plan is because I don't feel like it aligns with the stated goals of Nashville Next. The stated goals are preserving our neighborhoods while building housing close to transit and jobs, creating walkable centers, expanding walking, bike, and transit, and making our city affordable. The neighborhood is designed for walkability, increased density, with extensive bus routes available on Dickerson, Meridian, Lishy, Edwin, Montgomery, Jones, Chickasaw, and Douglas, as you'll see on the map that I've put up. There's a tremendous amount of public transit and there's, the other issue I've heard from some of the neighbors is that additional traffic that's going to be added to the neighborhood. If you look at the blue dots, there's approximately 18 points of egress from the neighborhood. And I think with additional lights on Trinity and possibly Douglas, that would take care of a lot of the, a lot of the concern. Additionally, it's supported by Ellington Parkway at Douglas and Trinity, which gives you easy access into downtown or north. And on the other side, it's supported by I-65 and 24. As well, Dickerson goes into the downtown corridor. So there's the accessibility and traffic. I will agree with some of the neighbors that maybe there needs to be an ordinance that you can't park on the street on some of these streets because I agree that safety should come first. The whole area is supported by Ellington. I said, there are also three arterial, or not arterial, but corridors through the neighborhood, Lishy, Meridian, and Jones that go all the way from Douglas to Trinity. Those support additional density. It's a walkable neighborhood with lots of transit and that's what we said we wanted for Nashville Next. We're mostly opposed to the fact that right before the, through all the meetings from a transparency standpoint, we were told that R-6 would be allowable in the R-3 sub-districts. And when the final plan came out, a lot of the R-3 sub-districts had been wiped away. A draft plan was, I think inadvertently disclosed or squeak.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Can I come back again?
No, unfortunately not. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Jason Feller. I'm going to jump right in. I've been a decade-plus owner on Gatewood for over 10 years. I've had the same tenant in the home for the entire time, kept the rent low, well below. He's ill and I say that to let you know that my suggestions are not out of greed. Here's where I think this plan falls short. I want to specifically address the R-1 sub-district that includes Pullen, Marshall Street, and the east portion of Gatewood Avenue. These streets are flanked by Meridian and Lishy, both north and south connectors to primary roadways. There's a red line bus that runs all day, every day. It literally makes a circle around this portion of the neighborhood. Gatewood, Pullen, and Marshall also have existing open alleyways maintained by Metro, perfect for off-street parking. Gatewood specifically caps the north end of Pinnix, St. Back, and this area of the neighborhood, including Lishy and Meridian, have historic 25-foot-wide lot lines. It would at least be in keeping with the rhythm of the neighborhood for Gatewood to mimic this pattern. The R-1 single-family home designation for this particular area is a great disservice to both the neighborhood and the city as a whole. It is very different in terms of infrastructure from the main R-1 designation in the eastern portion of Highland Heights. In good faith, I attended every event during the charrette week. There would seem to be a general consensus that this portion of the neighborhood could support more density and was reflected in the literature released by planning up until the first official draft was released on May 14th. There was even a preliminary draft that was dated May 1st where this area was designated as a sub-district R-3, which I think is appropriate. This draft turns out was not for public consumption and I'm not sure how it landed in my email. My understanding, it was passed out to the advisory committee and the planning staff. In the week or so between the preliminary draft and the official draft, there had been a complete 180 on this area. My concern is that the change was made to appease a few instead of listening to the many that sacrificed their time to participate in the charrette. Why was community involvement sought at all if ultimately the decisions would be left to a few loud voices? If these simple and reasonable changes could be addressed, I think I could get behind this plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Matthew Arnold. I'm a homeowner at 844 Cherokee Avenue and a member of the Homeowners Association. I'd like to register my opposition to the plan. First, I would like to address the question of methodological flaws. The document creates goals based on factors like affordability, density, traffic, and infrastructure that are not supported by data. Those concerns seem to have come up through the public input process but are not backed up by traffic studies and in the other necessary methodological rigorous work. In considering a sweeping set of policy changes like this, I believe that we need the surety of science. Secondly, I think that this plan, as it's written, does not recognize the, it's a lack of comprehensive vision for the neighborhood. The amount of market pressure in the neighborhood, our position in the urban core, is not reflected in this document. Single-family residences are not going to be sustainable in a neighborhood where, you know, realistically, we're looking at the city, citywide, we're 33,000 affordable housing units short. Single-family residences cannot sustain the density that we need and given our position at the boundary of the urban core, this is the most likely place for affordable housing to be able to be constructed. And in closing, I think the document fails to reckon with the future, that we need density, that this is going to be a neighborhood that grows. And I would recommend that nothing lower than R-4 be submitted in the neighborhood plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Welcome, good evening. My name's Doug Betty. I live at 4519 Shias Hill Road. I wear a couple of different hats. I own and manage about 100 rental properties in the Highland Heights, Joywood, Inglewood neighborhoods, and other areas in Nashville. Also, I'm the director and president of the Tennessee Real Estate Investors Association. The staff, the meetings, this is a really, really good plan. I don't know if I should have been in the other line or this line because these guys have really done a bang-up job. The only thing that I see from both sides that we have in common is there's two things, affordability and density. But I think in this particular plan, density, especially along Jones Avenue, needs to be increased highly because of the transportation issues that we have with busing and so on. It's kind of like Highland Heights is two different neighborhoods. On one side of the greenhouse, you have a more historical part of the neighborhood and on the other side, you have kind of cracker boxes and it's a different, you know, different type of home. Most of the density in that area is where the population of that particular neighborhood is more of a rental-type area than it is homeowner. That's kind of because it's two different neighborhoods. Again, these guys have done a really good job. I would just ask that the commission look at, you know, the density on some of the major corridors, especially where we can have transportation for, you know, our transitional housing and units that we have there and to keep affordable housing in the neighborhood. So if we limit to single-family, you know, single-family homes without the density, it's going to, you know, stop us in the future from being able to have affordable units for citizens of Davidson County. So anyway, thank you. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you, sir. Welcome. Thank you. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Dwayne Cuthbertson, 2814 12th Avenue South. First, out of the gate, I want to commend the efforts of staff. First, out of the gate, I want to commend the efforts of staff. They worked hard to walk a, a really fine line in achieving consensus and maintaining an open process and I really appreciate their efforts toward that end, essentially to build consensus on what helps us get to a livable, healthy neighborhood. And, you know, you've heard differences in what that means. I think there is agreement that a livable neighborhood includes complete streets, a complete sidewalk network, better stormwater, better transit, affordable housing, diversity of housing stock, healthy tree canopies, street trees. It also includes healthy commercial nodes along the edge and in general, kind of like Mr. Betty, I wasn't quite sure what line to get in front of because overall, I think this is a really good plan. It puts the density or the intensity where it's more appropriate, out at the edges, closer to those commercial corridors and, and preserves some of the lower intensity at the core. So to a large degree, I'm, I'm very supportive of this plan, but for a handful of, of issues. You've heard about the R-6A. I felt like there was consensus that most of the neighborhood, or many of the neighborhoods thought R-6A would be appropriate in very large parts of this neighborhood, including those blocks of Gatewood, Marshall, Pullen. But more importantly, and I've got 30 seconds to do this, but this, there are a couple of points where there's a lack of transition, particularly on Montgomery Avenue just north of Douglas Avenue. It goes from R-4 neighborhood evolving a sheer drop down to R-1, single-family dwellings. There's, there's no transition there. That's not general planning, good planning practice. The other area is Jones Avenue between Trinity and Cherokee, again, between mixed-use neighborhood nodes, no transition. So I'd like to see those improvements as part of this plan, but overall, I'm pretty supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Come on up, if y'all line up, begin. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Vita Rainey and I live at 1320 Montgomery. The gentleman before me, he spoke on my behalf. I am really upset because I feel like I'm being squeezed out. The plan is really not going to help me because there's a little something that I want to do to my property and I'm not going to be able to do that with the plan that is right here, set before me. And I just, I really like for you to reconsider that. Multi-housing, I, we don't need a lot of houses, but single dwellings, it's unfair to just put everybody in the same box. And I feel like that's what this plan is doing, especially for Montgomery, putting everyone in the same box and we all don't fit in the same box. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak? Come on up.
I'll be fairly brief. My name's Chuck McDonald and I have 11 duplexes and two houses that are on about a quarter of a block on Rosedale, Montgomery and Blue Ridge and, you know, I kind of acquired those over 10 years with the idea that they could be affordable housing, but ultimately improved with some density. And I would just like for the commission and planning department to be open to, you know, not single-family houses. I believe in order to have built that 30 or 40 years ago, it was multi-family and then it subsequently has been changed to single-family and, and I guess R-5. And, you know, I feel like that, that some of the steps that are being taken are against Nashville Next and mass transit in the sense that they're going to reduce density and they're not going to provide affordable housing and we're going to end up with something more akin to a Green Hills or 12th South. So I'd, I'd ask for your consideration to allow there to be more density.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else? Well, make sure we get everybody. All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, declare the public hearing closed and how about we start with the vice chair?
And just before she starts, we've, we've tried to reduce the temperature in here, just, I know it's hot. We apologize.
Can we, can we get the applicant, which is the staff, to potentially address some of the consistent concerns we heard?
Yeah, you can.
Before we do that?
Well, yeah, and you guys, yeah, the commissioners can always ask questions of the staff, so there were some, I, I think if y'all asked specific questions of some of those concerns, that would be, that'd be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, but def, we definitely need to get those answered. So vice chair, I might...
I might help some of those to start, but I, I guess first I just want to applaud this planning staff because it's great to hear the generally positive feedback about how this process went. I know it's been a long process. I have to say, the data that you presented, we knew it was, it was there because we've approved a lot of these rezonings and a lot of these changes, but it's pretty daunting to see it all in numbers and I'm really glad to see that we took a step towards, towards trying to correct the situation or just to, you know, manage it in a more responsible And I guess what, I mean, just a general thought, I think this analysis is done, looking at the change in, in building permits and code, you know, the stuff with codes. I wonder if that's something that we can look at going forward with other pockets of the city, just so, you know, as we're trying to get a handle on where gentrification is occurring, not just anecdotally and what we're seeing, but, you know, I think it would be an interesting exercise for us to kind of keep track of this data to maybe be a little bit more proactive going forward. Okay, so I guess my question is, my first question is consistent with what Commissioner Haynes brought up and that is, it seems like there are some pretty consistent issues that have been raised. And first being the northwest corner of the study area, the Edwin to Edith, that corner, wanting to reduce the density there and I can, I can see the rationale to that. Montgomery Street has been brought up quite a few times and then the area between Meridian and Lishy, Marshall, Pullen and Gatewood. So are those areas, I assume you heard all of that through the process and kind of what's thinking around where we've ended up?
We did. Those were consistent comments throughout and part of the strategy and when you have this disagreement in a community like we had for a good portion of this process was to look for those areas to compromise. And one of the issues that happens if you start adjusting it now with this person wants this and this person wants that, then we start messing with the balance that's there. And that, there is, there can be other ways to balance it, I'm sure. I'm not suggesting that we've got it perfect because I know we don't, but that's, that's important for us to keep in mind as we think about making changes in small areas because we did keep that in mind as trying to keep the core the way it is, to try to maintain the core and then also support the growth that's on the corridor. And it's been, the argument, as you've heard, is more about how that transition happens and how far that transition goes into the neighborhood that's considered the core.
Because I definitely do see, especially the northwest corner, the Eden, Edwin to Edith, I mean, that feels to me like that really is coming into the neigh, bringing more density into the neighborhood. I can see that.
And we, just to, to follow up on that, one of the things that we did consider, of course, are decisions that have been made at the Metro Council and Planning Commission in the past and that particular area would include flats in the future according to approved plans and other housing types that would be beyond single-family. And so the transition between that to Trinity or between that and then the higher intensity that would go on Dickerson Pike, I mean, it becomes tricky. How do you go up and down in scale or do you commit to that area that's closest to where there would be a potential BRT stop there at the intersection of Dickerson and East Trinity? Do you, do you keep that intensity there in those locations so that in the future we could have the kind of scale of redevelopment that could provide the infrastructure that's so desperately needed?
I guess for us, from a process perspective, I mean, if, you know, we're not going to start picking this apart, I assume, with each individual, I mean, we just, I don't think we can do that. But if, you know, given kind of where we've been, we also don't want to go forward with something that we know there's, you know, may need to be amendments due very quickly. But what's the process for that? Like, I mean, if, if this goes forward, but we decide that some of these things that have been raised in the comments and, and public hearing today really do warrant a second look, how would that get addressed?
I do think it's important to keep a holistic look at what we're trying to accomplish, not only with this neighborhood, but also within the broader context of Nashville. I think that some of the earlier images showing the relationship to other neighborhoods as well as downtown is important. But as with any planning area, if there are smaller pockets that need to be revisited, we can do that through a community planning process. So it is a living document. I mean, we hope that it's, that this is perfect and, but we, we know that, that there, there may be changes in the future always. So there is a process for doing that as we would any community plan amendment. We would hope to be looking at a much smaller area, I think, because of the commitment and the level of sort of the holistic look that the planning team has given to this area to try to strike that balance. So...
Before we talk about going in that direction, I just want to get into the details of some of the decisions that were made, if I can find the right slide here. Bear with me if you don't mind. Just, you know, the, the northwest portion of the neighborhood was a, was a, was definitely a point of contention. So it's a unique situation in that you have Dickerson Pike here, which is zoned for commercial development and it's policyed for the highest intensity, that the, the purple district, sub-district here. Immediately adjacent to that, you have Luton Street. So these properties on Dickerson for this entire run here actually have double frontage. So you've got CS Sony that runs from Dickerson to Luton. So our expectation is that properties along Dickerson will develop with commercial uses, also fronting on Luton. So what that creates is an issue where we have properties on Luton that are now looking either into the backs of commercial development or they're fronting on commercial development. So that, that inequality between those intensities and those uses there, we wanted to address with the sub-district along Luton. And then transitioning from that, along the backside of Luton on Meridian, we were, we were kind of transitioning from the intensity in that R-6 sub-district, which addresses the double frontage condition and then the, the SP that was approved along Meridian with flats in this location, as Marty pointed out. So there was a lot of support for that SP to get rid of a trailer park that was a blight in this neighborhood and folks supported the intensity for the most part in this location, but what we ended up with were, were a relatively intense building type along Meridian. So this policy tries to address that issue. So that's how you get kind of this transition from the most intense mixed-use sub-district into something that does permit stacked flats into something that does permit something not as intense as stacked flats, but townhouses and, and plex houses. So that's why that northwest corner is so intense because we're trying to accommodate that transition as well as, as looking at approvals, things that have been approved in the recent past. Montgomery, though, is, you know, this area was changed from neighborhood maintenance to neighborhood evolving with the last update. And what we found in this study was that's got a predominant single-family land use pattern. It's got the, arguably the most consistent development pattern within the entire neighborhood and Montgomery in particular has a very well-established, single-family detached, well-maintained, consistent development pattern from the neighborhood center at Douglas all the way north. So there was, you know, the argument on both sides, intensify Montgomery, keep it as it is, but given the land use pattern and the, the quality and, and style of development that's there today, we erred on the side of caution and preserving that form of development that's there today with R-1 sub-district.
So specifically in that north, I'm sorry, the northwest, I'm, I'm just still, I mean, I see the logic when I look at the map and I see, I see, but I also see that it could have just gone up Meridian, kind of paraling what it, where it is on the southern end of Meridian, like it could have just gone up instead of going all the way, taking that whole block, just continued. You could have gone up...
I can't get my cursor to work here. So you're, can you see my cursor?
Yes.
So you're saying just...
Just gone up that way.
And then cutting out Edith here.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and that's a possibility. The reason that, that we didn't do that again with that approved SP there, we were transitioning again into Edith. We got townhouses back there, so allowing something a little more intense in a single-family house along Edith to transition into that approved SP, which, making sure things were compatible on both sides of Edith, we took that in as well.
I think that, I think the point that was raised in some of the comments is that, is that our previous decisions have set a precedent that's creating a new development pattern, which may not be the correct development pattern for that entire quadrant, which I, that makes sense to me to some degree since partly what we're doing is trying to address where our, some of our decisions were not necessarily consistent with what the neighborhood wanted. So letting that set the precedent for that whole quadrant raises a little concern for me. I think that, you know, I definitely have lots of other questions, but I'm going to listen to what the others have to say.
Richard, please.
Yeah, that, that answer actually cleared up a couple of things, so I won't go over it, but the Edith, the northwest corner on Edith Avenue and that was a good way you set that, vice chair, but those kind of answered the questions. I wasn't familiar where Montgomery was and understanding that, that kind of cleared that, at least understand the, the thinking behind it. But I, first, you know, I come in first to the community that came up and, you know, took notice to all the changes that were happening and as Vice Chair said, this was good just to see the, the magnitude of changes that, you know, that, you know, that we've been a part of. And, and when you see things like this, you realize that, you know, something needed to happen. So I appreciate, I think I commend you guys for both the community for coming out and for staff for working through this. And I'm, I'm kind of more in the line of, let's, let this, let's let this cook for a while first before we start, you know, really making changes into it. And then, you know, then after it cooks for a while, as we've done other neighborhoods, you kind of see maybe where you can soften some. Somebody brought up about the centers, keeping the centers and, you know, I, I just think these are just things that we, we kind of keep in mind as we're moving forward with it, but I have nothing more to say. I, I think it's a, it's a good job and it's something I think we can work with.
Richard, please.
I, I went to the very first session and I heard the opposing forces and how strongly people felt and so I really am excited about this plan, that you all were able to find a balance. And I can see that some people are still a little upset about it, but like you said, I think it's really, it's a compromise and it's not going to be perfect and it's a great plan. So I have a couple of questions only, just the infrastructure comments that people made. How do we address that?
Depending on the development type and scope, we can...
Hey Lucy, you gotta get closer to the...
Sorry. Am I, I thought they were all on. Depending on the development type and scope, there's an opportunity to improve infrastructure with each development project, but Metro also does evaluate whole areas, we have whole stormwater improvement areas that we'll, we'll work on and improve. So it can happen a couple of different ways, but it is very typical, for example, with a specific plan to have road infrastructure, sidewalks, sewer, sewer improvements and the like. So it can happen a couple of different ways.
With new development, a lot of times the, the infrastructure has to be improved with new development, so that's sometimes the only time we, we will get the improvements. I mean, it gets challenging with smaller developments, but a, as more things occur, every project that goes through has to be reviewed by all the different reviewing agencies and upgraded, upgraded to meet today's stormwater regulations. So over time, there are improvements that are made with, with development.
So I guess to summarize that, the, the infrastructure is improved as new, as new construction happens. So infrastructure's not going to be improved for the whole area as a whole, just because it's getting more dense.
And it also goes back to our CIB. I mean, we look at the, the CIB every year and try to focus infrastructure improvements in areas that are within the, where Nashville Next calls for more development. So we look at those corridors and we look at those, those policies when we are evaluating the, the capital improvement budget. And so that's another way that we try to prioritize infrastructure and... And so that's another way that we try to prioritize infrastructure improvements.
Another question, there was one comment asking that we actually add, or I guess the point was to sort of not let things happen piecemeal, but kind of force the plan to happen. And I just wanted to clarify and have y'all clarify that when we make this plan, that doesn't force anyone to make denser dwellings on their property. It allows density, it doesn't dictate it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that is not really a possibility.
People that have existing zoning entitlements will always have those zoning entitlements until those change. So does that answer?
Pretty much, yeah. And then, yeah, that's enough. Thanks.
Councilman.
So in a, in a prior life, I worked and volunteered, were rebuilding together in Nashville. And so many of the homes that are here, I actually worked either with volunteers or with a crew. And it, it's just very nice to see the community coming together, because one thing that we were trying to do back then was to help people stay on their homes by fixing their houses, building ramps, whatever we needed to do, so they wouldn't be displaced. So I don't really have a comment about the plan, it's their plan, and it's good that the community came together, but I'm, I'm just very happy to see the community taking ownership and trying to hold on to the character of the place, so.
Thank you, Councilor. Commissioner Gobble.
Well, I, I want to commend the staff and the neighborhood. This is amazingly complex. I'm not as smart or as educated as the rest of the commission, and it's just totally overwhelming for me. But I do, you know, I tend to go along with it. I think it's very, very complicated. There's always going to be things that could be different. One quick question, the, there are several references to a tree canopy. Is there anything we, as a commission, can do about a tree canopy?
That's a very common, I think, complaint. And we do have an urban forester who works within the codes department, who works to evaluate and assess trees. And we do have a tree ordinance that requires replacement. But I think that with new development, it's something particularly on SPs, that we require, you know, landscaping plans and the like. And so we can, I, I think we can look at tree canopy. And, and, and I know that, that it's a goal for Public Works, for example, when looking at infrastructure as well. So it's very often in the implementation of improvements where the trees can be, can be uprooted.
With that, I'm pretty comfortable with it.
Commissioner Haynes.
So we get to hear from Ms. Davis frequently here, and I want to take a moment to commend her. She, she drove a lot of this process. And the fact that on a community plan this large, this complicated, and in this short a period of time, we have this few opponents, is a real credit to Ms. Davis, to the neighborhood, and to our staff. So incredible job. Marty and Lee have mentioned balance, and I know that's a real trade-off as you try to look at having more density in one area and another. I think this plan accomplishes that. Will it need to be tweaked over time? Sure it will. So I, I think this is a really good effort in a very short period of time, and I will move approval of staff's recommendation.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? There's a second. Any other discussion?
I'd just be remiss if I didn't say, I think it might warrant one more look in that Edith and Edwin streets, to think about possibly reducing that back to neighborhood maintenance.
I think that we can, as long as there's not like five amendments, that's one. Bob and Lucy tell me that they can look at that, that small portion of the plan.
Are you?
I'm not, no, I just, I, I think I just want it on the record that I think that at some point that might be one that we.
We look at.
We can reconsider, yeah.
Okay. That's a proper motion, a proper second, and comment taken. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it, and the staff recommendation is approved. So Commissioners, this, we've been here about an hour and 41 minutes, plus many, many hours before that. We, if it would be okay, I think we should probably take a short break, 10-minute break, just so that we can rest for a second and use the restroom. So we'll.
And clear the audience.
We'll do 10, 10 minutes.
I think we have food.
We have food, I think.
We've been working several hours, so I appreciate that. So we are now considering items 11 and 14. We've just been notified on item 14 that the applicant would like to defer that to July 26th. I want to make sure that we get that confirmed. Is the applicant here? Come on up and just say that's okay. Are you okay with defer, you want to defer to July 26th?
Yeah, July 26th.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate that. So that, let's take a, we got to take a vote on that, just to make sure that, but you've heard it from the applicant, is there a motion to defer?
Motion to defer.
There's been a motion to defer it to July 26th, item 14.
Second.
And the second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it. Item 14 is deferred, and we took that item out of order with no objection. We are now on to item 11, and this is our last item.
The next item on the agenda is item 11. The request is to amend a specific plan to permit a self-service storage facility. The site consists of two parcels totaling 1.76 acres and is located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Collins Road and Learning Lane in the Bellevue area. As a point of reference, this is Learning Lane to the south, Highway 100, a little bit further south, and this is the Harpeth Valley Elementary School there. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and to disapprove without all conditions. The property was rezoned to specific planned zoning in 2009 to permit a 15,824-square-foot daycare center for up to 175 children. No final site plan for the development was ever applied for, and the site is currently developed with a single-family residence. A wider look at the area shows a large area of single-family zoned properties to the north, with CN zoning directly to the west. More commercial zoning exists to the south of the property near Highway 100 intersection. Again, the large RS40 zoned property to the northeast is the Harpeth Valley Elementary School. A portion of the site is located in the conservation policy in response to a water course crossing the site. Metro Water has determined this to be a wet weather conveyance, and any development will be subject to the appropriate stormwater regulations. The remainder of the site lies within a large area of T3 suburban community center, with a large civic policy area located immediately east of the site. The T3 CC policy is intended to enhance and create suburban community centers that serve suburban communities generally within 10- to 20-minute drive. The plan is consistent with the site's land use policy. The plan proposes to construct a 71,882-square-foot self-service storage facility and 15 parking spaces located on the east and north side of the building. Access is limited to one driveway on Learning Lane. Heights are limited to three stories and 39 feet, as measured to the highest point on the roof, and perimeter landscaping is proposed along the northern and eastern property boundaries. A six-foot sidewalk and six-foot planting strip is proposed along Learning Lane, while an eight-foot sidewalk and six-foot planting strip is proposed along Collins Road. This slide shows the south elevation of the proposed building as it would be viewed from Learning Lane. Staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions, as the plan is consistent with the site's land use policy. This completes the presentation.
Thank you, sir. We'll open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? Come on up, welcome. And you have 10 minutes, and you can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. My name is Travis Todd. I live at 5904 Crosspoint Lane, also the applicant representing Thomas and Nuttman Engineering Company. I'll just mention a few comments here of how we got to this point today with the community, and I'll introduce my, my client, and we'll reserve a few minutes for questions and comments. The proposal here is to develop a state-of-the-art, very safe, executive self-storage facility that, as the staff mentioned, meets the policies and the UDO standards that are in this area. Prior to today, we, we have actually had eight meetings now with the community surrounding HOAs, the school, I'll just mention a few of those. Poplar Creek HOA, which is the neighborhood closest, we met with them twice. Grassland Heights Baptist Church, we've met with them, they're in support. And most importantly to us, we've met with Dr. Anne Marie Gleason, the principal of the school next door, and we have support of the PTO as well. And so that was really important to us, we're abutting a school, and we wanted to make sure that they were on board with what was proposed here. We also, our last meeting was hosted by Councilman Rosenberg. It was very well-attended, and we appreciate him setting that meeting up. I'll mention that six of our eight meetings we held before we even made our application for preliminary SP, we really wanted to do our homework and make sure we had something that the community could get behind. The three things we heard the most when we were, when we were out in the community, were about traffic concerns, the safety of the children at, at the school next door, and then architectural sensitivity to how this fit into the community. I'll mention on the traffic, the two previous commercial proposals for this site generated hundreds of trips more per day. On a weekday, this generates 10 to 12 trips per day. The, the peak is on a weekend. On a Saturday, we'll generate 25 to 30 trips per day. So it's very low intensity in terms of traffic. We know this is a, kind of an interesting intersection, the way everything lines up. So low traffic use is important. The neighbors that live the closest are excited about a use that is very low traffic. There was a daycare and a bank proposed previously, both had multiple curb cuts on two different streets, and we've reduced that to one. The safety of the children was the second thing we heard at the school next door, and again, I've mentioned that we've got support of, of the principal at the school. We are adding sidewalks in both frontages. On Collins Road, we're meeting MCSP. On Learning Lane, we're exceeding MCSP. We're widening the sidewalk by two feet than what is prescribed to make that connectivity from the school down to the intersection, and then providing a crosswalk across Learning Lane to, that will then get you across Highway 100 to kind of connect the neighborhood there. We are also committed to dedicating additional right-of-way along Learning Lane, and we've coordinated this with Bev Emerell with Public Works, who's here. If they were to, Metro wanted to add a turn lane here in the future, or add a center lane that could be used for queuing during pickup and drop off, drop off at the school, it gets very tight in there, Metro would already have the right-of-way to be able to do that at that time. And then we have a traffic access study underway right now. And then finally, architectural sensitivity, the building is, is setting lower than the, than the building across Collins Road. So when you look at the roof heights, they're very similar, even though that building is, is kind of, it's a story, and that kind of has a parapet. We're not that much higher than that building, so we've set the building low. The brick building fits in with the character of the community, significant screening. And so we've really taken care to make sure that we address the community's concerns regarding, how does this look and feel? From the school side, we are actually adding Type C landscape buffer and a retaining wall there, a brick wall to match, to match the building, so that from the school parking lot, and we've done renderings of this, from the school parking lot with the existing trees that we're preserving, you barely see the top of the roof from the front door of the school. And then we've provided a seven-foot wall there, opaque wall, so that, you know, if any kids were to get over there, it's not something they can climb over. And so that was at the request of, of the principal. So we'd like to thank the planning staff for their support, for recommending approval. I'd like to introduce my client, Skip Elefante, to say a few words, and then we'll reserve the rest of our time.
My name's Skip Elefante. I want to thank planning, because I know that planning was very integral in, in getting us to this point. It was a very challenging site because of the water and the school, and, and all the difficulties that the, that the property, it's a very difficult property. Been developing self-storage facilities for 35 years, and, and this particular facility is very, it, just look at it as, there's only one point of entry, so it's not your typical self-storage facility, where you've got doors all over the place and people parking out in the parking lots and, and causing disturbance. And I think, I think we've pretty well answered a lot of the questions that the neighbors have had and addressed their, their issues. And again, I thank planning and you folks for listening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Welcome, sir. And you'll have two minutes, and state your name and address.
I apologize for reading, but two minutes cramps my style. Good afternoon, my name is Steve Nathan. I live at 205 Sweetgum Court in the nearest neighborhood, Poplar Creek Estates. I'm also a board member of their HOA, and the residents I've spoken to are primarily opposed to this rezoning, because they simply don't believe this type of business belongs in a residential area. I'm quite nervous. My opposition is rooted in the potential for unintended consequences. I believe this property would be much better suited for a mixed-use commercial, similar to the other properties in the surrounding area. If a building includes space for a dentist, a hair salon, a dance studio, and a sandwich shop, for example, and one or two of those businesses fails, it's a simple matter for a yoga studio, or a chiropractor, or a pizza parlor to move in. However, if this storage business should unfortunately fail, it's, it leaves a very difficult-to-convert space, makes resale of the property unlikely, and will leave residents with a large, empty building that sits and decays, attracting trouble and becoming an eyesore. And I don't think anybody wants that next to their elementary school. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming down. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, two-minute rebuttal?
Yes, at that, I mean, I'll just mention that, again, my client's been in business for 35 years developing these facilities, never had a facility close in that entire history, so we feel very confident. A lot of demographics and research have gone into, you know, putting this facility in this location, so we know it's going to be well-supported from a business sense. And so we, we feel very comfortable with, with the long-term, you know, prospects of this business. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing, seeing no one else wishing to speak, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Haynes, you want to go first?
Obviously, the original SP was approved in '09. The property's been sitting there vacant. While I appreciate the neighbor's concern about other, higher, and better uses, it's sat vacant for this many years. It seems like the applicant has done a really good job of balancing the school, the water conditions, and I'm going to support staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Sims. You just talked.
Oh, good. I just think for the record, I want to make sure that this will indeed meet all of the River Trace Highway urban design, when we looked at that, okay. Because I know that we had a lot of people from the community come talk about that, and I want to make sure that their voices were reflected in here, so I support this.
Commissioner Gobble.
I, I agree with Commissioner Sims.
Commissioner Michelle.
I agree, too.
Commissioner Tibbs.
I agree. One thing I want to say, too, that one, one of the things of getting density, that these storage facilities are kind of coming more in place of need, you know, because we're making, to be more dense, space rooms are getting smaller, you know, that's kind of part of it. So in this site, if I've got it correctly, is a tough site, like was pointed out by the applicant. So I just want to say that I do agree with staff recommendation.
Vice Chair.
I agree with staff recommendation, and I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendation with all conditions.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it, and it passes as staff recommends. Now, we are on to Historic. Commissioner Tibbs, anything going on new in Historic?
The main thing they wanted me to make sure was, is that, that next week's meeting is going to be back at Sunny West.
Hold on one second, Commissioner. If, if everybody could, if you're having a conversation, let's step out of the room, okay? I appreciate it. Give them one second. That way we can. All right. Give us a second. If y'all could give us a wave, give us a wave. All right. State that again, Commissioner.
Okay. Next week's meeting, there was some miscommunication, but it is going to be back at Sunny West. So there was some information that was sent out earlier that was thinking we're, because of what we're doing, what they were going to have to be changed, but it is back at Sunny West.
Okay. Parks, Commissioner Haynes?
Because we have lots of great donors, and we're acquiring more and more parkland, the big controversy-
the big controversy is naming parks. So we're getting lots of community input on names for new parks.
Commissioner Haynes Park.
That is not one of the considerations.
Oh, okay.
The second thing is people want to rename parks. We have a policy against renaming parks, so there was a big effort to rename Hadley Park to the Malcolm X Park. But a lot of neighbors came out in support of the history of the Hadley Park name, and so we kept the name at Hadley Park. So that's the latest news from parks.
Thank you. Executive Committee report. Vice Chair, I think we, we had a lot going on with that, and again, I want to reiterate, I appreciate Bob's service. We really do. Bob, anything in the Director's Report?
I don't think I have anything new.
All right, and the Councilmen left us, so there must not be anything going on at the council. I do know that they are, we're in the midst of considering the CIB along with the budget, and several Councilmen I've, I've talked to have really appreciated our efforts on the CIB, the entire planning commission. So I do want to say thank you to the staff and especially that division for all their work. A lot has gone into that, and that's changed at a very rapid pace, I would argue, and there's, I know that there'll be lots of ongoing discussions, but it's, we, several council members have said they think it's a, a much better document that is very understandable, and they've gotten a lot of good feedback from the public. So I do appreciate the staff for working on that. When, when is our next committee meeting and where? We just want to make sure. Bob?
Next commission meeting is on June 28th at Howard School.
Our normal, our normal spot. We haven't been back in a little bit, so that'll be good. Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved. Where adjourn? All right. Good job.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.